Next item, please.
Citizens' participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action, who are signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the secretary, may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The board president reserves the right to limit time.
We have a student with us here today that's got school tomorrow morning. She's been waiting very patiently, so we're gonna call her first, please, Madam Secretary.
Okay, certainly. First of all, agenda items for action, we have none, so these are non-agenda items for action. And the first one is Howard Elementary's fifth grade camping trip, and Medina Ferris would like to address the board.
Hello, my name is Medina Ferris, and I'm in fifth grade at Howard Elementary. I'm here to talk about the fifth grade camping trip. This year, we were supposed to go on an overnight camping trip, but the Howard administration and the fifth grade staff decided to change it to one day. They didn't get a lot, give a lot of reasons, except that there wasn't any locks on the doors, and they thought it was, they, they thought it wasn't safe because of technology issues and for personal reasons, which they didn't say. But all of the other groups in previous years had no problem with these issues. A lot of the other kids, including myself, were wondering why the trip was changed at the last minute. All of the other fifth graders went on this trip. My sister went on this trip and told me all about it. I was looking forward to this trip along with the other fifth graders. We were never told we weren't going, but at the parent meeting on February 6th, they told us that it was, that it was a three-day, two-night camp trip, and we would do activities all three days. Then I came home with a note on February 28th stating, "Due to extenuating circumstances, Howard will be changing the overnight camp to a day camp experience that is extended to 7:30 PM. We wanted to let you know immediately for scheduling purposes. You can't have a three-day camping trip and do all of the activities in one day. The other schools will be going or have gone on this, on this trip, so why is it only our, why is it only our school who is concerned about safety? We are all still hoping, we are still hoping the decision will be changed due to the new principle. My friend Kennedy would have joined me, but she is sick. Thank you."
Medina. You did a great job addressing this board tonight, and I promise you, we're gonna have Dr. Malakal look into it and give us information. We don't have that information with us right now, but we know how to get ahold of you. Yeah, we, we know. We'll, we'll get ahold of you and respond to your comments, so it was very brave of you tonight. Good job.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
We have Asra Ali, who would like to speak to special ed funding.
Good evening. So I am Asra Ali, and I'm an alumna from Dearborn Public Schools, and the issue I address is that, to what extent are students in Dearborn Public Schools, students with learning challenges, whether it be mental or physical, are they included in programs and sports? For example, there are many sports that I grew up going to Dearborn Public Schools that I didn't see students with physical disabilities being provided sports specifically for those students. And so the issue I arise is that I am in the works of piloting a program, and the program aims to include students of that cohort that provides them opportunities to inclusion and diversity, and to go to these programs and these schools and these trade schools, to expose them to these opportunities that oftentimes are not, they're not included in regards to, and it's unfortunate. And so I actually wrote a curriculum, and I sent it forth to the Department of Education, Special Education. Unfortunately, I have not gotten a response back, but with every piloted program, we're going to have to encounter the issue of money. And so the question I bring forth is that, is it possible if I'm able to get access to the budgeting in terms of the Special Education Department? And if we could potentially gain some sort of money or grant for this program to go ahead and be initiated? The program is meant to be for a year long, and I was hoping for it to start off with Etzel Ford and students with mild learning disabilities, and then further expand it. I actually started, founded a program that was a Dearborn Youth Initiative.
Ms. Ali, if you don't mind, I'm gonna need you to wrap up, because we have many speakers tonight, and Mr. Malakal's gonna make a comment.
Gotcha.
Yeah, please wrap up.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I actually started the same similar program a few years back, and I just wanted to go ahead and expand it to the students with learning disabilities.
So I just mentioned, as far as opportunities, we believe in all opportunities for all students, including special education, and we have a non-discrimination policy. Now, we get into specifics. Mr. Assaly's here for the Special Ed Department, you can give him your contact information. If we're looking at, you know, adopting different programs, that goes through our curriculum department, 'cause I heard you mention about promoting a curriculum, so a lot of times there's a review process for that, so, but Mr. Assaly can get with you and get some information. But we do believe in opportunities, in fact, we just had, some of it just came out of a meeting for special ed, and we pride ourselves in providing opportunities across the board for all students with disabilities in Dearborn and beyond.
Perfect. And then who'd you say was the kind of-
Mr. Assaly would be over this side.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for addressing. Mr. Mustafa Solbi would like to speak to the board regarding a teacher situation.
Again, I wanna make sure we don't mention employees' names, please.
Good evening. My name is Mustafa Solbi, and I'm speaking on behalf of Dearborn High, which recently lost a fabulous faculty member. I consider this to be my favorite class of, out of all my classes at Dearborn High School. I know that most of my love of this class stems from, from the rare and precious and highly effective teaching style, and not the subject matter itself. This member is undeniably the best Dearborn High School teacher I have ever had. This individual managed to give quality learning, keep us interested as well. Most importantly, this person created me a general interest in literature and a desire to prove to him that I can do it. Before concluding, I'd like to explain the current status of our classroom. It is led by a substitute teacher, and we are not learning very much. It is a massive drop from the quality we had just months ago. Oftentimes administrators are far removed from the classroom, seeing only numbers and reports. I hope my words bridge that gap. If it was unclear, the current setup of these AP Literature classes is not working out in the least. Bluntly speaking, bluntly speaking, I urge the administration to reassess the facts of the situation and reconsider the decision previously made. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Dorro Alfouadi would like to speak on behalf of an AP Lit teacher.
Hello. Good evening. I wanted to address the board on behalf of a Dearborn public teacher who has unfortunately lost to Dearborn High, unfortunately lost. We know how much of an amazing AP Lit teacher he is. I, for one, had, did not have him as a teacher. However, I confided in him with everything English-wise. And the first time I had a conversation with him, the man, I instantly knew, he knew how to talk to us. And by us, I mean kids in high school. Anyone who knew him could see how much he loved his job, and how good he was at doing it. I would have moved to his class if AP Lang wasn't a year-long commitment. I also wanted to bring up the injustice of this entire situation. But first, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I am a minority, and being in a minority, I have faced unbelievable, an unbelievable amount of discrimination in Dearborn Public, in the Dearborn Public School District, by students and by teachers. Let me take a moment to tell you that this degradation, no, this, this degradation that I face a lot of my days is not seen, is not heard, is not proven. This discrimination of racial and non-racial minorities is unbelievable. You feel this extreme relief when someone advocates on your behalf. You are faced with so much harassment, and it's extremely painful to hear, to hear it and just move on as if it never existed. It's a very toxic environment for those who are trying to survive in high school. This dedicated teacher rose to the occasion and fought it. He fought the bigotry and defended those defenseless. Imagine if one of your daughters or sons were defenseless in this situation. There are teachers this district hired that come to work and are genuine, and if this district transfers a teacher who stood for what's right, I feel I might need to reconsider their priorities. By making this decision, the district has made, by making the decision the district has made, you have taken away a person that helped students cope, a person that helped them feel seen and heard. You've taken away the opportunity for students, and most of all, you have taken away an amazing teacher from a group of people that loved and appreciated the work he did. But with the "students first" motto plastered everywhere, I have yet to see action in the defense of the students in this district. But in fact, the total opposite. Taking something away that was meant to and that did help students survive this time of their lives. So let me ask you this. If teachers are first, I would tell you the only thing I, I and many other students see as valid is bringing this teacher back to Dearborn High School. And that my, and that, my friend, would really be putting the students first. Thank you.
William Kirk would like to also speak on the Dearborn High AP Lit teacher.
Repeat the name.
William Kirk.
I'm a former graduate of Dearborn High, and I'm reading a letter on behalf of a friend. My name is Jenna Dagger. I graduated from Dearborn High in 2019, and I am currently a student at the University of Michigan in Ann Arbor. I took this AP Literature teacher my senior year of high school, and in my opinion, the teacher was one of the best teachers Dearborn High has to offer. Not only did he care very deeply for his students, but he's extremely passionate about the craft of teaching. He instilled in us the importance of critical thinking, not only when reading literature, but also in broader aspects of our lives, and always pushed us to do our best because of his passion for our well-being. My opinion of him was not only formed by experiences with him, but with the experiences of my peers as well. He believes in his students, especially those who need extra attention and care. He's never failed to stand up for the best interests and our well-being of his students. I believe that removing him from DHS would be a grave mistake and an immense loss for Dearborn High. His passion and talents for teaching and inspiring the students at Dearborn High is an absolute necessity for maintaining the high standards that my family and myself accept from, expect from Dearborn High. I urge you to support him and allow his passion for teaching and mentoring students to remain a critical asset of Dearborn High's teaching facility. Thank you.
Lisa Goddard would like to speak on the English teacher at DHS. Lisa Goddard.
I just wanna say, I'm really sorry you have to meet in such a cold room. I really enjoyed hearing all of that discussion about the programs that are offered here in the district. I'm just a parent, but I have benefited from almost every program that was talked about tonight. My two older boys graduated from DHS. I think it's a fantastic school. I know many of the teachers personally. I volunteer there all the time. I love it. My daughter graduated from Magnet. That was an amazing resource to our family. I'm so grateful for it. And my son is just about to wrap things up in the collegiate program. And then we have a little straggler that's still at Lindbergh Elementary, so we're gonna have skin in the game for a while. But what I wanted to say to you is how profoundly grateful I am for what you do. I love this school district, and I really, really love the students here, and I feel that you do too. I know none of you know me, except for, I know Jim, he's a neighbor, but I know of you. I've followed some of you on social media, and it's clear to me that you really care about the children, the students in this district. And if we care about the students in this district, I feel that we need to take much better care of the people who teach them. And I, I agree with the students who've spoken. I'm aware of the situation at DHS, but that's not actually here what I'm, here to talk about. I just wanted to mention that we had a situation, a situation at Lindbergh about three weeks ago that's very similar to what's going on at DHS. We had some parents go on social media, and without naming any names, make some comments. It was very clear to everyone who was able to read those comments what was being said. And it, it turned into a dogpile just in, I don't know, 30 minutes from the time that this person's comment was posted. I think something like 60 comments were made. And they were so bad, it was so horrible. They were speaking about a teacher, a Lindbergh teacher. And in the time that I've been at Lindbergh, it's 12 years now, I feel like I'm never gonna get out of there, and it's been a great school, but I have gotten to know this teacher, similar to the teacher at DHS that everyone's alluding to, and these are tough teachers. And my feeling, when I first moved to Dearborn and my children were younger, is I really struggled with tough teachers. I did not want a teacher to criticize my child. And then my kids got older, and they started going to high school, and I started realizing the benefit of these tough teachers who hold our kids accountable. And with time, with decades of teaching experience, they bring something to the table. Now, you showed a graphic just a few minutes ago. You were talking about how many teachers we're losing and how few we're recruiting. I would just like to suggest to you that the way we're treating our teachers, and I don't mean you personally, I'm talking about our community and our parents, I am specifically referring to the parents in this district, are doing a terrible job of supporting teachers. I would like to see a change in the way we treat our teachers. They deserve our support and our respect. That's all I really have to say to you.
Mary Kay Kubizik would also like to speak, talk about DHS teacher. Mary Kay Kubizik?
Kubichak.
What is it?
Kubichak.
Oh, Kubichak.
I'm, I tried.
So, full disclosure, I am a teacher in this district, and I love teaching in this district, but I'm here tonight as a parent and a member of this community. I have lived in Dearborn for 52 years, all of my life. My children have gone through Dearborn Public Schools, and my youngest is still in Dearborn Public Schools. I am heavily invested in the school district and in our city. I'm not gonna cry, I'm not gonna cry. If you, if you've ever asked your children how their school day went and only received a muttered fine in return, then you'll understand what a wonderful experience it is for your children to say, "Damn it," to share something from a class nearly every day that excited or inspired them. This was my fortunate experience when my son had AP Literature at Dearborn High School last year. Nearly every day, he would say, "You have to see this video, you have to read this poem, you have to read this story, you have to hear this song that our teacher shared with us in class." His AP Lit teacher was a teacher he listened to, because this teacher pushed students to think at a higher level in ways that were entertaining and accessible for them. And most people have no idea how rare that is, what a difficult thing that is to do. I wanted my daughter to have that same experience next year when she's a senior, but now she won't, because this teacher has been removed from his classes. 150 students have been left without the teacher who has been with them since August, and now they spend their day with a substitute. What is just as concerning to me is a statistic that was mentioned at the last board meeting, which is so relevant to this issue, that over twice as many teachers retired or resigned this year than usual, and that the number of teachers resigning to work in other districts was notable. As a parent, I'm very worried about how we'll be able to keep the good teachers we have in our school because of incidents like this. And I'm very worried about how our children can be assured of receiving a quality education if teachers don't feel supported and are leaving to go to other districts. I ask that you please return this teacher to his classroom and to his students, for him, for the teachers, for my daughter, and for our students. Thank you.
Okay, so I just wanted to mention, there was an error at the last board meeting as far as the number. It was a combination of resignations and retirements, so the percentage of those, it actually didn't, did not double, it was, it stayed flat, and I just figured I mentioned this, I kinda commented it earlier in the, in the board meeting. But if we look at, we're really around percent of resignations, we actually went from three years ago, down from 7%, 5%, 5% we've held, and retirements have, as I mentioned earlier, about 3% to 2%, 3%. So it's really kinda stayed, and I think the number was combined last meeting, so I just wanted to clarify that. And I think too, we were having some technical difficulty, if you remember with the presentation, so I apologize for that error, and we did provide this to the board in the request for info sheet.
Was the number combined for this year, so was it combined for previous years too? We're comparing apples to apples?
Yes, we are. Yeah, I have the data from each of them. So I just think it was an error when it was stated doubled last time, so.
Okay, okay. Next.
Mr. Gregory Viscomi would also like to talk to the board concerning a DHS teacher.
Full disclosure, I am a teacher at Dearborn High School. I'm also a proud alumnus of Dearborn High School. I've been a lifelong resident of Dearborn and Dearborn Heights, and I am a parent of a Dearborn High School student, a parent of a Dearborn High School alum. I'm married to a Dearborn High School alum, so I've spent a lot of time at Dearborn High, and I've been teaching there for over a quarter of a century. I'm here to give my thoughts on the removal of a teacher from Dearborn High School, the one that has been being referenced up to this point. The teacher in question has been an outstanding faculty member at Dearborn High School for two decades. He has not only been a tremendous teacher and yearbook coordinator and a wonderful department chairman of the Language Arts Department, but he's also volunteered his time to the theater program, the music program. He has come through for almost every other program in the school when they've been asked and needed help. He has inspired many students, including my oldest daughter, and was instrumental in her pursuing a career in literature and communications. She's looking at going into publishing and possibly into playwriting and screenwriting, and this all came with the inspiration of the teacher in question. I was hoping very much that my younger daughter would be able to have the same opportunity. As a staff member, as a parent, I think this would be a huge mistake to let this teacher leave Dearborn High School. And if you are sincere about teachers first and students first, then, as one of our students just said, if you keep the teachers first, the students will be first and will benefit. Thank you.
Andrew, Angie would also like to speak to the board concerning AP Lit educational opportunities.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. My name's Andrew Angel. I have two students at Dearborn High. They've been in the Dearborn High School since pre-K. I had a great opportunity. I was one of the people who was here 10 years ago, 12 years ago, banging on about advanced opportunities for our high-end kids. It's been excellent so far, but I am here because my son's asked me to give you some feedback about what's happened in one of their Advanced Placement classes. They had a terrific teacher who did excellent work for my senior, who had him as a, as a AP Lit teacher, and was learning a lot and was getting excited about taking the APA exam. The two pieces of feedback that, that I wanted to share is the recovery from whatever situation happened in the, in the building that I don't, I don't, and I don't, wasn't in any of the hearings, don't know any of the details about it. The recovery was not adequate. They have a substitute teacher who's not certified in AP Lit, who's coming in and trying to do the best they can, but my son's not being prepared to take the APA exam this spring, which is a big loss for, for him and for the district, right? There, that's 150 kids, they're in that same situation. Second, the message that, that has, these kids have got from this situation, I mean, there's 15 of them who are here tonight who gave up their Monday night because they really feel that this teacher didn't get a fair hearing. That tells me a lot about this, about the teacher's character, that the kids are really, you know, want to advocate for that teacher. But you, the specifics of the situation really kind of have them feeling like the teachers aren't being, the good teachers, you don't have their backs right now. And if that's the feeling that the students have, then I'm really concerned about the feeling that the teachers have as well. So I'd really like you to reconsider both your reaction to the, the incident that happened, get a qualified teacher in the classroom, and as far as the kids are concerned, they would really like that qualified teacher to be the teacher that was there before. So, thank you for the time tonight.
John Devaning, it's hard to read, it's either John Devaning, or it could be Jan-
Jan Deconing.
Deconing, okay. That's a K, it looks like a B. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jan Deconing. I'm here with my wife, Yvette Deconing. I have here a statement written by our son, Case Deconing, who is a former student of DHS. He can't be here tonight, he's away at college, so he asked me to read the statement for him. "To the school board of Dearborn Public Schools, my name is Case Deconing, and I'm writing this letter to be delivered on my behalf advocating for my former AP Lit teacher and mentor. I graduated from Dearborn High School in DCMSD in 2018, and I'm currently at Michigan State University, majoring in English, secondary education, a degree I wouldn't pursue if it weren't for this talented teacher. His constant pursuit of teaching beyond expectations inspired me at a crucial time in my search for a career path. With more and more Language Arts classes diverting from a curriculum centered around the art of literature and an appreciation of language, this teacher showed his students that they can fulfill curriculum standards and still gain a personable and even profound experience from studying the English language. I still bring up his approach to teaching Macbeth in my educational classes, because he knows the importance of hearing the barge work read aloud before dissecting it off the page. After we finished our AP Language and Composition exam, he used a few weeks left of the year to give us an intensive reading seminar in novels that rarely make their way into the course load, set aside to make room for Articles of the Week and IM essays that could be administered by a robot. I still hold some of those novels close to my heart. They were each another nudge that pushed me ever so slightly down the rabbit hole of literary appreciation, and now at the other end, there's a potential English educator. I say potential English educator, because in these last two years of college, I've been doubting whether or not this is the right career for me, and this situation is another check on the list of reasons why more and more education majors and new teachers are beginning to enter this train of thought. Is it not the obligation of all educational administration to support their teachers in a world where disrespectists hurl the teachers from students, political office, political officials, parents and taxpayers? Shouldn't it be the administration's job to stand their ground and defend those who are in the trenches every day, working tirelessly in service to their community and its children? What is an aspiring teacher supposed to do when they see their role models drop like flies from a seemingly uncaring educational institution, except consider where else their skills have maybe of value and their hard work appreciated? Too much taxpayers' money is spent on researching why there's a teacher shortage. Simple answer, lack of respect. This teacher is one of the best things that's ever happened to Dearborn High School and this school district. I wouldn't even be able to write this letter, let alone think for myself, if I didn't cross his path at the time that I did. I truly respect him, but I, it can't just be me. You all have to as well, and I promise that if you do, others will follow. Thank you. Signed, Case Deconing, a future educator." Thank you.
Cole Wizneski, Cole Wizneski would like to speak to the board about our former Language Arts teacher.
Altruistic, galvanizing, and exceptional are all words that I use to describe this teacher. The amount of people here today shows the impact that he has on our lives and on his I was in his class during the incident, and what I saw in her was the teacher doing his job by creating a safe learning environment. He would have done that for any person, that's just the kind of person he is. I've had five Language Arts teachers at DHS throughout my four years, and only two of them actually made a difference in my education. One of them was this, was this teacher. Most teachers just go by the book and just don't have the enthusiasm that they should. This teacher by no means went by the book, and that's a good thing. He would help us learn the material in a fun, new perspective and use references that we would understand to help teach us. His vast number of real-world experiences also added another layer to the class and made it fun, interesting, and enjoyable. When most students leave high school, they have no idea how to do real-life things like do taxes, put down a mortgage on a house, or other basic things you need to do in life. This teacher's gonna take a whole semester to teach us these things. Our class has been miserable since he left, no work has been done, and the sub can't control the class. We're just sitting and running out the clock and can't get, and, and not learning. So, parents, if you want your child to get the best education and do the best that they possibly can, this teacher is the man you want teaching your children. He, in my opinion, is the most qualified person to teach Language Arts in our school. Thank you, have a good night.
Batul Bazey, Batul Bazey would like to speak also regarding the DHS teacher.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Batul Bazi, and I'm an AP Literature and Composition student. Since mid-January, my teacher was removed from our classroom, and for a month and a half, we had a substitute without any explanation as to where our teacher was. My classmates and I's education is being disrupted and hurt in this process. We do not have an actual teacher who has replaced this certain individual. For the past two months, we have learned very minimal information as our substitute is not trained to be an English teacher and comes to class every day with no lesson plans. Personally, I find it absolutely ridiculous that the teacher walks in, looks me straight in the eye, and tells me, "Oh, what are we doing today?" Well, to be honest, I don't know, because I'm not the teacher, you are. I'm the student, so you should be teaching me. As we prepare for the APA exam in May, many of us are struggling to get the resources and skills in order to succeed. Not only will I pass the exam with a low score, but this is also hurting my future as I will have lower chance of earning college credits. And in reality, this is hurting you guys because you guys need our scores. Dearborn Public School claims students first, however, the situation has been quite opposite. We have asked the administration multiple times if we will receive an official teacher, but in return, we're given the usual response, "We are not in control." So, if you're not in control, then who's in control? Being that the administration is not taking control, here we are, students, having to speak upon our educational rights. In reality, I'd probably want to be at the basketball game right now, but I can't because I'm here looking at you guys, trying to prove my rights that I deserve. My teacher was nothing but inspiring, respectful, and determined to help his students succeed. Please bring back our teacher. Thank you.
Carolyn Guideman would also like to speak on the DHS teacher.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Guideman. I'm a senior at Dearborn High School, and I am here to talk about the teacher we've been talking about. It is your job as the Board of Education to decide what is best for the students as well as the staff, but in order to claim that you put the students first, you need to hold true to that ideal. And by removing my AP Lit teacher, you're not putting the students first. In my AP Lit class, my teacher inspired me to think more deeply and critically than any other Language Arts class that I've ever taken. In the regular classes, at least from what I've heard, he's had many disrespectful students, but at least he could keep them under control. He doesn't let them take over the class. Within the Language Arts Department, he was the heart and soul and inspired friendship amongst all of his coworkers. I admit, I wasn't in his class when the incident went down, but considering no one released an official statement on what happened, I'm not going to hold myself accountable for any misinformation. What I can derive from the situation is that my teacher stood up for two students who were being harassed. By removing this teacher, you're supporting the bullies, the people who are notorious for disrupting the class, for disrespecting teachers, and for making learning tedious for dedicated students. Because he was removed, my AP class has become shallow and uninteresting. The regular classes are more misbehaved than before, and the sub can't do anything to get these kids under control. If you choose to keep your ground and keep the decision that you've made by removing this teacher, then it doesn't matter where you take that sign, to any other school in the district, to any, take a picture with any other prominent political figure, or with the Jonas Brothers, you're not holding true to that ideal. You're not putting the students first in this situation because by removing this teacher, you took out the person who stood up for other students, who inspired honesty, advocating for yourself, and critical thinking beyond analyzing the color of grapes. Removing this teacher destroyed the morale of the Language Arts Department, not only by removing him, but by defending the type of kids who've given teachers grief for years. If you truly put students first, and I mean the students who care about their education, not the students who come to school just simply because they're forced to by the law, then please reinstate him. I would also like to mention, this is my third teacher that's been removed this year due to either retirement or, you know, extenuating circumstances, and I just, I thought that was worth mentioning. Thank you, and have a good night.
Janine Elgandior would also like to speak regarding the DHS teacher.
I'm Janine Elgandior. I'm a senior at Dearborn High School. Ever since the school year has started, I was excited to come to school. I've always loved Dearborn High School and been excited to come to school every single day and get to experience something new from my teachers and to learn something different. But since this teacher has been removed from our school, I have been counting down the days until I graduate and I can leave, because I am ultimately ashamed of how this man was treated. If this man can be so easily removed because of students who have been known to be racist and sexually harass girls in the school, and not care about the consequences because they believe that their parents can get them out of any situation, I am ready to leave. Because this is not fair, not only to the teacher, but to the students who are being deprived of an education that they deserve. This teacher, I used to hear about this teacher before I even came to Dearborn High School, before I even entered the doors as a freshman. I used to have friends who had older siblings who used to mention their teachers and tell us about the teachers that they had, and his name was always mentioned. And I was always excited to go to Dearborn High School, so I was able to meet him. And when I did meet this teacher, everything that they said about him was true. Everything that they said, from how respectful he is and how much he cares about his students' educations, was true. And the fact that these students, who were in this situation, received no consequence at all, but the teacher was removed so quickly, is embarrassing. And for one, I am ready to graduate and, you know, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Muatiman, and I cannot tell what this last name is. What is your last name, please?
My name is Modiman El Rubei.
Okay, thank you.
I'm also here to speak about the famous DHS teacher we've all been talking about. I'm here to express the amount of concern I have for this one teacher. As rose above all the others that I've had for the past 12 years I've been in this district, he's contributed so much towards my interest of analyzing the depths and meaning of stories I encounter. I couldn't recall the amount of times I've lost myself by the sheer amount of detail he provides towards questions I had given to him. I don't think it's an exaggeration saying that he's the best teacher that's qualified to teach AP Literature. I can go more in depth, but sadly, these experiences have been cut short. The teacher has been suddenly removed, and all we've been told is that he isn't even coming back. I hope... I'm not only here to express the amount of concern I am in for him, but the amount of drive that the class have lost throughout the entire day, we've been going through every single day, just confused. We don't know what to do without him, and we want him back. We've been doing not much work lately. The substitute is also confused by the work we're given. And the slogan's always been, "Students first," but I don't really think so after having this teacher removed from us without any reinstatement as to why and how and whether we can be given a voice on getting him back. I don't know. I'm just a little bit disappointed that I had to sacrifice my time just to speak for this amazing gentleman. Thank you.
John Cialoni would also like to speak regarding the DHS teacher. John Cialoni?
Full disclosure on my part as well. I'm also a Dearborn Public School teacher, 38 years. And I am speaking as a parent and taxpayer of this city. I am a lifelong member, resident of Dearborn, with the Dearborn Public Schools and in Fort Community College, and lo and behold, I still live in Dearborn. I'm here to speak about the teacher who was recently voluntarily transferred from Dearborn High as well. As a parent of two former DHS students who had this teacher in either Language Arts or Yearbook, I would like to express my disappointment that this decision was made by our administrators. As a parent and educator for over 38 years, I understand the importance of the teacher-student relationships and how they affect student learning in the classroom environment in general. Of all the teachers that my daughters had at DHS, this particular teacher was one most talked about at our dinner table each evening. They were excited to go to his class every day because they had a great personal relationship with him, and he made learning fun for them, regardless of whether they were working on a research paper or on a deadline for the Yearbook. Learning from this teacher was not always fun and games, however. He was very demanding and extremely knowledgeable in his subject area, and was able to share that knowledge in such a way that it was meaningful and understanding for his students. I have one daughter, who is currently a junior in college, majoring in Sports Broadcasting and Communications, who upon hearing the news that this particular teacher had been transferred to another school, made the following comment, and I'll paraphrase what she said. She was home on spring break last week. She basically said, "That's so sad and unfortunate. What a disservice to the students at Dearborn High School. He taught me so many of the skills that I use in my classes on a daily basis." My daughter writes her own scripts for broadcasts that she does on her TV campus TV station in Boston. And in fact, one of our Language Arts teachers at Dearborn High School just recently asked and received a copy of one of her broadcasts so she could use in her class at Dearborn The teacher that we are talking about had a way of connecting with students on their level, which made the classes they took very enjoyable. He was a mentor to them when they had the Yearbook class, and he prepared them well when they had him for AP Lang. But most of all, he was someone they could trust and confide in. Actually, he was someone who was real and could relate on their level because he is what is best for students. Thank you.
So, first, I just want to say, appreciate the students and citizens who exercised their right for public comment today. We heard what you had to say. Just a couple of things I want to mention. I will, we will look into the situation with the substitute teacher. We will follow up. I'll have Ms. Farage and HR look into that. Again, I've mentioned this early in the day, but unfortunately, I can't comment on any personnel matters related to anyone in the district or any human resources, including staff or students, so there won't be any, you know, specific comments there. I also feel the need to mention, because there was a couple of comments about harassment, we do have a policy, board policy, that's mandated mandatory reporting requirements. And so, if anyone feels like there was harassment, it should either be reported to the direct supervisor, the principal at the building, or one of the compliance officers, which several are here today. We have all the policy and procedures listed on the website, so I just wanted to make that clear because I did hear a few of those comments. So, if that is the case, we actually have one of them right here, Ms. Maysam Ali Bazi. You can give your information to her, or we have Mr. Salee, and then again, you can also give that to the principal. And we have others that are listed as compliance officers as well, so, thank you.